Alright hello everybody, we are back here in C Programming: A Modern Approach 2nd Edition by K. N. King. We're gonna be starting Chapter 2, C Fundamentals. Thank you guys so much for being here, this is the condensed version on the channel. If you'd like to check out the full picture stream, you can go ahead and watch the stream where we talk and do notes, discussion, and complete to practice problems live. One man's constant and another man's variable. This chapter introduces several basic concepts including pre-processing directives, functions, variables, and statements that will need in order to write even the simplest programs. Later chapters will cover these topics in much greater detail. To start off, Sections 2.1 present a small C program and describes how to compile and link it. Sections 2.2 then discusses how to generalize the program and Section 2.3 shows how to add explanatory remarks known as comments. Section 2.4 introduces variables which store data that may change during the execution of a program and Section 2.5 shows how to use the scanf function to read data into variables. Constance: Data that won't change during program execution can be given names as Section 2.6 shows. Finally, Section 2.7 explains C's rules for creating names, identifiers, and Section 2.8 gives the rules for laying out a program. Okay, so 2.1, writing a simple program. In contrast to programs written in some languages, C programs require a little boilerplate. A complete program can be as short as a few lines. Program: Printing a pun. The first program in Kernigan and Ritchie's classic, the C programming language, is extremely short. It does nothing but write the message, "Hello world." Unlike other C authors, I won't use this program as my first example. I will however uphold another C tradition, the bad pun. Here's the pun: "To see or not to see?" That is the question. The following program, which will name pun.c, displays this message each time it runs. So we have pun.c here, we include the standard I/O.h. Remember, this is the standard library. And we have a define a main function which has an int main void inside the brackets here, printf "to see or not to see?" That is the question. And obviously with the printf, if we remember back, we have the delimited character or the new line character here. And we return zero back to the console. Alright, Section 2.2 explains the form of this program in some detail. For now, I'll just make a few brief observations. The line #include the standard I/O.h or stdio.h for short is necessary to include information about C's standard I/O input-output library. The program's executable code goes inside main, which represents the main program. The only line inside main is a command to display the desired message. printf is a function from the standard I/O input-output library that can produce nicely formatted output. The backslash end code tells the printf function to advance to the next line after printing the message. The line return zero semicolon indicates that the program returns the value zero to the operating system when it terminates. Compiling and linking. Despite its brevity, getting pun.c to run is more involved than you might expect. First, we need to create a file named pun.c containing the program. Any text editor will do. The name of the file doesn't matter, but the .c extension is often required by compilers. Next, we've got to convert the program to a form that the machine can execute. For a C program, that usually involves three steps. Pre-processing: The program is first given to a preprocessor which obeys commands that begin with hashtag known as directives. A preprocessor is a bit like an editor. It can add things to the program and make modifications. Compiling: The modified program now goes to a compiler which translates it into machine instructions, object code. The program isn't quite ready to run yet however. Linking: In the final step, a linker combines the object code produced by the compiler with any additional code needed to yield a completed executable program. This additional code includes library functions like printf that are used in the program. Fortunately, this process is often automated, so you won't find it too onerous. In fact, the preprocessor is usually integrated with the compiler, so you probably won't even notice it at work. The commands necessary to compile and link vary depending on the compiler and operating system. Under the Unix, the C compiler is usually named CC. To compile and link the pun.c program, enter the following command in a terminal or command line window: cc pun.c The percent character is the Unix prompts, not something that you need to enter. Linking is automatic when using CC, no separate link command is necessary. After compiling the linking program, CC leaves the executable program in a file named a.out. By default, CC has many options. One of them, the -o option, that allows us to choose the name of the file containing the executable program. For example, if we want the executable version of pun.c to be named pun, we would enter the following command: cc -o pun pun.c The GCC compiler. One of the most popular C compilers is the GCC compiler which is supplied with Linux, but is available for many other platforms as well. Using this compiler is similar to using the traditional Unix CC compiler. For example, to compile the pun.c program, we would use the following command: gcc -o pun pun.c The Q&amp;A section at the end of the chapter provides more information about GCC. Integrated Development Environments: So far, we've assumed the use of a command line compiler that's invoked by entering a command in a special window provided by the operating system. The alternative is to use an Integrated Development Environment, IDE, a software package that allows us to edit, compile, link, execute, and even debug a program without leaving the environment. The components of an IDE are designed to work together. For example, when the compiler detects an error in a program, it can arrange for the editor to highlight the line that contains the error. There's a great deal of variation among IDEs, so I won't discuss them further in this book. However, I would recommend checking to see which IDEs are available for your platform. Let's take a closer look at pun.c and see how we can generalize it a bit. Simple C programs have the form directives, int main, void, statements. In this template, and in similar templates elsewhere in this book, items printed in courier appear in a C program exactly as shown. Items in italics represent text to be supplied by the programmer. Notice how the braces shown where main begins and ends. C uses open curly braces and closed curly braces in much the same way that some other languages use words like begin and end. This illustrates a general point about C. It relies heavily on abbreviations and special symbols. One reason that C programs are concise or less charitably cryptic. Even the simplest C programs rely on three key language features: directives: editing commands that modify the program prior to compilation; functions: named blocks of executable code, of which main is an example; and statements: commands to be performed when the program is run. We'll take a closer look at these features now. Let me go back because I think that might have interrupted. We'll take a close, so even the simplest C programs rely on these three key language features: directives: editing command lines that modify the program prior to compilation; functions: named blocks of executable code of which main is an example; and statements: commands to be performed when the program is run. We'll take a closer look at these features now. Directives: Before a C program is compiled, it is first edited by a preprocessor. Commands intended for the preprocessor are called directives. Chapter 14 and 15 discuss directives in detail. For now, we're interested only in the hashtag include directive. The pun.c program begins with the line #include standard I/O.h. The directive states that the information in standard I/O.h is to be included into the program before it is compiled. Standard I/O.h contains information about C's standard I/O library. C has a number of headers like standard I/O.h. Each contains information about some part of the standard library. The reasons we're including standard I/O.h is that C, unlike some programming languages, has no built-in read and write commands. The ability to perform input and output is provided instead by functions in the standard library. Directives always begin with a hashtag character which distinguishes them from other items in a C program. By default, directives are one line long. There's no semicolon or other special marker at the end of the directive. Functions: Functions are like procedures or subroutines in other programming languages. They're the building blocks from which programs are constructed. In fact, a C program is a little more than a collection of functions. Functions fall into two categories: those written by the programmer and those provided as part of the C implementation. I'll refer to the latter as library functions, since they belong to a library of functions that are supplied with the compiler. The term function comes from mathematics, where a function is a rule for computing a value when given one or more arguments. f of x equals to x plus one, or g of y and z equals to y squared minus z squared. C uses the term function more loosely. In C, a function is simply a series of statements that have been grouped together and given a name. Some functions compute a value and some don't. A function that computes the values is the return statement to specify what value it returns. For example, a function that adds one to its argument might execute the statement return x plus one. While a function that computes the difference of squares of its arguments might execute the statement return y times y minus z times z. Although a C program may consist of many functions, only the main function is mandatory. Main is special. It gets called automatically when the program is executed. Until Chapter 9, where we'll learn how to write other functions, main will be the only function in our program. The name main is critical. It cannot begin with start or even capital main. If main is a function, does it return a value? Yes, it returns a status code that is given to the operating system when the program terminates. Let's take another look at pun.c program. Includes standard I/O.h, right? And we return zero. The word int just before main indicates that the main function returns an integer. The word void in parentheses indicates the main has no arguments. The return statement, return zero, has two effects. It causes the main function to terminate, thus ending the program, and indicates that the main function returns a value of zero. We'll have more to say about main's return value in later chapter. For now, we'll always have main return value zero which indicates normal program termination. If there's no return statement at the end of the main function, the program still terminates. However, many compilers will produce a warning message because the function was supposed to return an integer but failed to. Statements: A statement is a command to be executed when the program runs. We'll explore statements later in the book, primarily in Chapter 5 and 6. The pun.c program uses only two kinds of statements. One is the return statement, the other is the function call. Asking a function call to perform its assigned task is known as calling the function. The pun.c program, for example, calls the printf function to display a string on the screen. C requires that each statement ends with a semicolon. As with any good rule, there's one exception. The compound statement, which we'll encounter later. The semicolon shows the compiler where the statement ends, since statements can continue over several lines. It's not always obvious where they end. Directives, on the other hand, are normally one line long and they don't end with a semicolon. Printing string: printf is a powerful function that we'll examine in Chapter 3. So far, we've only used printf to display a string literal, a series of characters enclosed in double quotation marks. When printf displays a string literal, it doesn't show the quotation marks. printf doesn't automatically advance to the next output line when it finishes printing. To instruct printf to advance one line, we must include backslash end, the new line character, in the string to be printed. Writing a new line character terminates the current output line. Subsequent output goes on to the next line. To illustrate the point, consider the effect of replacing the statement by two print calls instead, right? The first call of printf writes "to see or not to see?" The second call writes "that is the question" and advances to the next line. The net effect is that the same of the printf of the original statement. The user cannot tell the difference. The new line character can appear more than once in a string literal to display the message, "Brevity is the soul of wit," Shakespeare. We could write printf "brevity is the soul of wit," backslash end, space, space, dash, dash, Shakespeare, backslash end. 2.3 Comments: Our pun.c program still lacks something important, documentation. Every program should contain identifying information, the program name, the date written, the author, the purpose of the program, and so forth. In C, this information is placed in comments. The symbol forward slash star marks the beginning of a comment and the symbol star forward slash marks the end. Comments may appear almost anywhere in a program, either on separate lines or on the same line as another program text. Here's what the pun.c might look like with comments added at the beginning. Comments may extend over more than one line. Once it has seen the opening symbol, the compiler reads and ignores whatever follows until it counters the closing symbol. If we would like, we can combine a series of short comments into one long comment like this. Comments like this can be hard to read though, because it's not easy to see where the comment ends. Putting these characters on a line by itself helps. Even better, we can form a box around the comment to make it stand out. Programs often simplify box comments by omitting the three sides. A short comment can go on the same line with other program code. A comment like this is sometimes called a winged comment. Forgetting to terminate a comment may cause the compiler to ignore part of your program. Consider the following example: printf, right? My cat, and you forget to close the comment, and so it ends here. Because we can elect to terminate the first comment, the compiler ignores the two middle statements. And the example prints only my fleas. C99 provides a second kind of comment which begins with the forward slash a forward slash, two adjacent slashes. This is a comment. This style of comment actually automatically ends at the end of a line. To create a comment that's more than one line long, we can either use the older style, opening and closing symbols, or just put a forward slash forward slash the beginning of each comment line. The newer comments now has a couple of important advantages. First, because a comment automatically ends at the end of a line, there's no chance that unterminated comment will accidentally consume part of a program. Second, multi-line comments stand out better thanks to the slash left that's required at the beginning of each line. 2.4 Variables and assignment: Few programs are as simple as the one in Section 2.3. Most programs need to perform a series of calculations before producing output and thus need a way to store data temporarily during program execution. In C, as in most programming languages, these storage locations are called variables. Types: Every variable must have a type which specifies what kind of data it will hold. C has a wide variety of types. For now, we'll limit ourselves to just two, int and float. Choosing the proper type is crucial, since the type affects how the variable is stored and what operations can be performed on the variable. The type of a numeric variable determines the largest and smallest numbers that the variable can store. It also determines whether or not digits are allowed after the decimal point. A variable of type int, short for integer, can store a whole number such as zero, one, three ninety-two, or negative two five five three. The range of possible values is limited though. The largest int value is typically two billion one forty-seven million four hundred eighty-three thousand six hundred and forty-seven, but can be as small as thirty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven. A variable of a type float, short for floating point, can store much larger numbers than an int variable. Furthermore, a float variable can store numbers with digits after the decimal point like three hundred seventy-nine point one two five. Float variables have drawbacks however. Arithmetic on float numbers may be slower than arithmetic on int numbers. Most significantly, the value of a float variable is often just an approximation of the number that was stored in it. If we store zero point one in a float variable, we may later find that the variable has a value such as zero point zero nine 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 eight seven, thanks to rounding error. Declarations: Variables must be declared, described for the benefit of the compiler, before they can be used. To declare a variable, we first specify the type of the variable and then its name. Variable names are chosen by the programmer, subject to the rules described in Section 2.7. For example, we might declare variables height and profit as follows: int height, float profit. The first declaration states that height is a variable of type int, meaning that height can store an integer value. The second declaration says that profit is a variable of type float. If several variables have the same type, their declarations can be combined. Notice that each complete declaration ends with a semicolon. Our first template for main didn't include any declarations. When main contains declarations, these must precede statements. As we'll see in Chapter 9, this is true of functions in general, as well as blocks. Statements that contain embedded declarations, as a matter of style, it's a good idea to leave a blank line between the declarations and the statements. In C99, declarations don't have to come before statements. For example, main might contain a declaration, then a statement, and then another declaration. For compatibility with older compilers, the programs in this book don't take advantage of this rule. However, it's common in C++ and Java programs not to declare variables until they're first needed. So this practice can be expected to become popular in C99 programs as well. Assignment: A variable can be given a value by means of assignment. For example, the statements height eight, length twelve, and width equal to ten. Assign values to height, length, and width. The numbers eight, twelve, and ten are said to be constants. Before a variable can be assigned a value or used in any other way for that matter, it must first be declared. Thus, we could write int height, height equals eight, but not height eight, int height. A constant assigned to a float variable usually contains a decimal point. For example, a profit is a float variable. We might write profit equals to two one five zero point four eight. It's best to append the letter F for float to a constant that contains a decimal point if the number is assigned to a float variable. Failing to include the F may cause a warning from the compiler. An int variable is normally assigned a value of type int and a float variable is normally assigned a value of type float. Mixing types, such as assigning int and float to a variable or assigning float to a value of an int variable, is possible but not always safe, as we'll see in Section 4.2. Once a variable has been assigned a value, it can be used to help compute the value of another variable. In C, star represents the multiplication operator, so this statement multiplies the value stored in height, length, and width, then assigns the results to the variable volume. In general, the right side of an assignment can be a formula or expression in C terminology involving constants, variables, and operators. Printing the value of a variable. We can use printf to display the current value of a variable. For example, we write the message height h, where h is the current value of the height variable. We'd use the following call to printf: printf quote height colon percent d backslash end, and then we put height. Percent d is a placeholder indicating where the value of the height variable is to be filled during the printing. Note the placement of the backslash end just after the d, so that the printf will advance to the next line after printing the value of height. Percent d works only for int variables. To print a float variable, we'd use the percent f instead. By default, percent f displays a number with six digits after the decimal point. To force percent f to display the p digits after the decimal point, we can put dot p between the percent and the f. For example, to print the line of profit equals to twenty-one fifty point four eight cents, we'd call printf as follows: printf to quote profit colon space dollar sign percent dot two f backslash end, and then insert the profit. There's no limit to the number of variables that can be printed by a single call to the printf. To display the values of both height and length variables, we could use the following call to printf: printf height percent d, length percent d backslash end, height comma length. Okay, so this says program: Computing the dimensional weight of a box. Shipping companies don't especially like boxes that are large, but very light, since they take up valuable space in a truck or airplane. In fact, companies often charge extra for such a box, basing the fee on its volume instead of its weight. In the United States, the usual method is to divide the volume by one hundred and sixty-six, the allowable number of cubic inches per pound. If this number, the box's dimensional or volumetric weight exceeds its actual value, the shipping fee is based on the dimensional weight. The one hundred and sixty-six divisor is for international shipments. The dimensional weight for a domestic shipment is typically calculated using one hundred and ninety-four instead. Let's say that you've been hired by a shipping company to write a program that computes the dimensional weight of a box. Since you're new to C, you decided to start off by writing a program that calculates the dimensional weight of a particular box that's twelve by ten by eight. Division is required by C using the forward slash operator. So the obvious way to compute the dimensional weight would be weight equals to volume divided by one sixty-six, where weight and volume are integer variables representing the box's weight and volume. Unfortunately, this formula isn't quite what we need. In C, when one integer is divided by another, the answer is truncated. All digits after the decimal point are lost. The volume of a twelve by ten by eight box will be nine hundred and sixty cubic inches. Dividing by one hundred and sixty-six gives the answer five instead of five point seven eight three. So we have in effect rounded down to the next lowest point. The shipping company expects us to round up. One solution is to add one hundred and sixty-five to the volume before dividing by one sixty-six. A volume of one sixty-six would give a weight of three thirty-one divided by one sixty-six or one, while a volume of one sixty-seven would yield three thirty-two divided by one sixty-six or two. Calculating the weight in this fashion would give us the following program: dWeight.c computes the dimensional weight of a twelve by ten by eight box. So we include the standard I/O and the int main void, meaning that we have a main function that's going to return an integer and there's no parameters. We declare some integer variables, height, length, width, volume, and a weight. So it's all going to be integers, no floats. So height equals to eight, length equals twelve, width equals ten, so that's basically like the problem stated. We compute a volume, and then we compute the weight like it stated in the problem. By adding the one sixty-five ahead of time, it helps get rid of that truncation, it rounds up. printf, and it prints out the dimensions. So be it the d, the dimension d, the dimension d, you know, by d by d by d of length, width, and height. printf for volume, it'll print out the volume in cubic inches for the, right here. And then printf for the dimensional weight, and print out the dimensional weight given here. And then it just outputs the three outputs that we were given. So really easy, just basic math. initialization: Some variables are automatically set to zero when a program begins to execute, but most are not. A variable that doesn't have a default value and hasn't been assigned a value by the program is said to be uninitialized. Attempting to access the value of an uninitialized variable, for example, by displaying the variable using printf or using it in an expression, may yield an unpredictable result such as two five six eight or negative three zero eight nine one or some equally strange number with some compilers. Worse behavior, even a program crash may occur. We can always give a variable an initial value by using assignment of course, but there's an easier way, put the initial value of the variable in its declaration. For example, we can declare the height variable and initialize it in one single step. In C, jargon, the value eight is said to be an initializer. Any number of variables can be initialized in the same declaration: int height, eight, length twelve, width ten. Notice that each variable requires its own initializer. In the following example, the initializer ten is good only for the variable width, not for height or length, which remains uninitialized, right? In this example here, width is assigned to ten, but height and length are not assigned. You can't really infer that all of these will be equal to ten in this statement, that's not true. Printing expressions: printf isn't limited to displaying numbers stored in variables. It can display the value of any numeric expression. Taking advantage of this property can simplify a program and reduce the number of variables. For instance, the statement volume is equal to height times length times width. printf, where we insert the volume variable into the print statement, could be replaced by the insertion of this variable for this function or this kind of, you know, kind of, I guess, like lambda function or whatever, quick little math expression. printf's ability to print expressions illustrates one of C's general principles, where every value is needed, any expression of the same type will do. 2.5 Reading input: Because the dWeight.c program calculates the dimensional weight of just one box, it isn't especially useful. To improve the program, we'll need to allow the user to enter the dimensions. To obtain input, we'll use the scanf function, the C's standard counterpart to printf. The f in scanf, like the f in printf, stands for formatted. Both scanf and printf require the use of a formatted string to specify the appearance of the input or output data. scanf needs to know what form the input data will take, just as printf needs to know how to display output data. To read an int value, we'd use scanf as follows: scanf percent d ampersand i, reads an integer value and stores it into i. The percent d string tells scanf to read input that represents an integer and i is the int variable in which we want scanf to store the input. The ampersand symbol is hard to explain at this point for now. I'll just note that it's usually, but not always, required when using scanf. Reading a float value requires a slightly different call of scanf. scanf percent f ampersand x reads a float value and stores it into x. Percent f works only with variables of type float, so I'm assuming that x is a float variable. The percent f string tells scanf to look for an input value in float format. The number may contain a decimal point, but doesn't have to. Computing the dimensional weight of a box revisited. Here's an improved version of the dimensional weight program in which the user enters the dimensions. Note that each call of scanf is immediately preceded by a call to printf. That way, the user will know when to enter input and what input to enter. Compute the dimensional weight of a box from input provided by the user. So we include the standard I/O here. We have int main void, which our main function which returns an integer, it has no parameters. We declare a variable of height, length, width, volume, and weight, which are all of integer type. We printf, enter the height of a box, and we use scanf to receive a integer and assign that variable to height. We have printf, enter length of box, and we assign that variable using scanf. Enter length of box and we assign that variable using scanf to length and so on and so forth. And we compute volume. We compute weight and we return the same output as before. So this is similar in a sense to the input function in Python. But we have to receive and declare back the anticipated. Type of the variable of which the user is giving to us. The output of the program has the following appearance. Inputs entered by the user is underlined. A message that asks the user to enter input a prompt normally shouldn't end with a new line character. Because we want the user to enter input on the same line as the prompt itself. When the user presses the enter key, the cursor automatically moves to the next line. The program doesn't need to display a new line character to terminate the current line. The D weight two dot C program suffers from one problem. It doesn't work correctly if the user enters non numeric input. Section three point two discusses this issue in more detail. When a program contains constants, it's often a good idea to give them names. The D weight dot C and D weight two dot C programs rely on the constant one sixty six. Whose meaning may not be at all clear to someone reading the program later. Using a feature known as macro definition, we can name this constant. Hashtag define inches per pound one sixty six. Define is a pre-processing directive, just as include is, so that no semicolon is at the end of the line. When a program is compiled, the preprocessor replaces each macro by the value that it represents. For example, the statement weight equals to volume plus inches per pound minus one over inches per pound. Will become weight equals to volume plus one sixty six minus one over one sixty six. Giving the same effect as if we'd written the later statement in the first place. The value of a macro can be an expression. Define reciprocal pi is one point oh float over three point one four one five nine float. If it contains operators, the expression should be closed in parentheses. Notice that we've used only uppercase characters or letters in macro names. This is a convention that most C programmers follow, not a requirement of the language. Still, C programmers have been doing this for decades. You wouldn't want to be the first to deviate. Converting from Fahrenheit to Celsius, the following program prompts the user to enter a Fahrenheit temperature. And then prints the equivalent Celsius temperature. The output of the program will have the following appearance. As usual, input entered by the user is underlined. Enter Fahrenheit temperature to twelve Celsius equivalent one hundred. The program will allow temperatures that aren't integers. That's why Celsius temperature is displayed as one hundred point zero instead of one hundred. Let's look first at the entire program to see how it's put together. Celsius dot C converts a Fahrenheit temperature to Celsius. Include standard I O dot H. Define freezing point of thirty two point zero float. Define scale factor of five point oh flow over nine point oh float. We have int main void float Fahrenheit and Celsius. Print F enter Fahrenheit temperature. We're gonna scan and wait for input for a float value and assign that to the Fahrenheit. We defined in the float declaration here. We're going to create a Celsius. We're going to refer back to our Celsius definition variable. And create a Fahrenheit less the freezing point times our scale factor. And then print out the resulting uh in one decimal point for Celsius and return zero. The statement Celsius equals to Fahrenheit less freezing point times the scale factor converts the Fahrenheit temperature to Celsius. Since freezing point stands for thirty two point zero float, the scale factor stands for five point zero float over nine point oh float. The compiler sees this statement as this. Defining scale factor to be five point oh float over nine point oh float instead of five over nine. Is important because C truncates results when two integers are divided. The value of five over nine would be zero, which definitely isn't what we want. The printf call writes the Celsius temperature. Print F Celsius equivalent is percent zero point one F backslash N Celsius. Notice the use of the percent point one F to display Celsius with just one digit after the decimal point. Okay, identifiers. As we're writing a program, we'll have to choose names for variables, functions, macros and other entities. These names are called identifiers. In C, an identifier may contain letters, digits and underscores. But must be with a letter or underscore. In C ninety nine, identifiers may contain certain universal character names as well. Here are some examples of legal identifiers. Times ten, get underscore next underscore char underscore done. The following are not legal identifier. Ten times get dash next dash char. The symbol ten times begins with a digit, not a letter of course, or underscore. Get next char contains minus signs, not underscores. C is case sensitive. It distinguishes. Between uppercase and lowercase letters in identifiers. For example, the following identifiers are all different. Lowercase job, capital B at the end, capital O, capital O B, capital J, J O, capital J V, so on so forth. These eight identifiers could all be used simultaneously, each for a completely different purpose. Talk about obfuscation. Sensible programmers try to make identifiers look different unless they're somehow related. Since case matters in C, many programmers follow the convention of using only lowercase letters in identifiers. Other than macros, with underscores inserted when necessary for legibility. Symbol table, current page, name and address. Other programmers avoid underscores, instead using an uppercase letter to begin each word with an identifier. Table, simple table, current page, name and address. The first letter is sometimes capitalized as well, although the former style is common in traditional C. The latter style is becoming more popular thanks to its widespread use in Java and C sharp. And to the lesser extent, C plus plus. Other reasonable conventions exist, just be sure to capitalize. And identify the same way each time it appears in a program. C places no limit on the maximum length of an identifier, so don't be afraid to use long descriptive names. A name such as current page is a lot easier to understand than a name like CP. Words or keywords. The keywords in table two point one have special significance to C compilers and therefore can't be used as identifiers. Note that five keywords were added in C ninety nine. Because of C's case sensitivity, keywords must appear in programs exactly as shown in table two point one. With all letters in lowercase, names and functions in the standard libraries such as printf contain only lowercase letters also. Avoid the plight of the unfortunate programmer who enters the entire program in uppercase only to find that the compiler can't recognize keywords. And calls the library of functions. Watch out for other restrictions on identifiers. Some compilers treat certain identifiers. ASM, for example, as additional keywords. Identifiers that belong to the standard library are restricted as well. Accidentally using one of these names can cause an error during compilation or linking. Identifiers that begin with an underscore are also restricted. We can think of a C program as a series of tokens, group of characters that can't be split up without changing their meaning. Identifiers and keywords are tokens, so like operators like plus and minus. Punctuation marks such as commas and semicolons in string literals. For example, the statement printf quote height colon space percent D backslash N quote. For and insert the height variable consists of seven tokens. Tokens one and five are identifiers, so the print and the heights. Through token three is a string literal. And tokens two, four and six are punctuation. The amount of space between tokens in a program isn't critical in most cases. At one extreme, tokens can be crammed together with no space between them at all. Except where this would cause two tokens to merge into a third token. For example, we could delete most of the space. In the Celsius dot C program of the section two point six, provided that we leave space between tokens such as int and main. And between float and Fahrenheit. In fact, if the page were wider, we could print the entire main function on a single line. We can't put the whole program on one line though, because each pre-processing directive requires a separate line. Compressing programs in this fashion isn't a good idea. In fact, adding spaces and blank lines to a program can make it easier to read and understand. Fortunately, C allows us to insert any amount of space, blanks, tabs and new line characters between tokens. This rule has several important consequences for program layout. Statements can be divided over any number of lines. The following statement, for example, is so long that it would be hard to squeeze into. A single line. Space between tokens makes it easier for the I to separate them. For this reason, I usually put a space between and after each operator. I also put a space after each comma. Some programmers go even further, putting spaces around parentheses and other punctuation. Indentation can make nesting easier to spot. For example, we should indent declarations and statements to make it clear they're nested inside main. Blank lines can divide a program into logical units, making it easier for the reader to discern the program's structure. A program with no blank lines is hard to read as a book with no chapters. The Celsius dot C program on section two point six illustrates several of these guidelines. Take, let's take a closer look at the main function in the program. Where we have, this is our program, where we have nice spaces between our, you know, different lines. We have spacing in between our operators. First, observe how the space around equals minus and star make these operators stand out. Second, notice how the indentation of the declarations and statements make it obvious that they belong to main. Finally, note how blank lines divide main into five parts. One, declaring the Fahrenheit and Celsius variables. Two, obtaining the Fahrenheit temperature. Three, calculating the value of Celsius and four, printing the Celsius temperature. And five, returning the operating system. While we're on the subject of the program layout, notice how I placed the bracket tokens underneath main. And put the matching bracket on a separate line aligned with the opening bracket. Putting the closing bracket on a separate line lets us insert or delete statements at the end of the function. Aligning it with the opening bracket makes it easy to spot at the end of the main. A final note, although extra spaces can be added between tokens, it's not possible to add space within a token. Without changing the meaning of the program causing an error. Writing float Fahrenheit Celsius or float Fahrenheit Celsius produces an error when the program is compiled. Putting a space inside a string literal is allowed, although it changes the meaning of the string. However, putting a new line character in a string, in other words, splitting the string over two lines is illegal. Continuing a string from one line to the next requires a special technique that we'll learn in a later chapter. Uh Q and A, what does GCC stand for? GCC originally stood for the GNUC compiler and now stands for GNU compiler collection. Because the current version of GCC compiles programs written in a variety of languages including Ada, C, C plus plus, Fortran, Java and Objective C. Okay, so what does the GNU stand for? GNU stands for GNU, not Unix. And it's pronounced, oh, GNU, by the way. GNU is a project of the Free Software Foundation as an organization set up by Richard M. Stallman. As a protest against the restrictions of the licensed Unix software. According to its website, the Free Software Foundation believes that users should be free to run, copy, distribute, study, change and improve software. The GNU project has rewritten the traditional Unix software from scratch and made it publicly available at no charge. GCC and other GNU software are crucial to Linux. Linux itself is only the kernel of an operating system. The part that handles program scheduling and basic I O services. The GNU software is necessary to have a fully functioning operating system. For more information on GNU project, visit W W W dot GNU dot org. What's the big deal about GCC anyways? Uh GCC is significant for many reasons, not least. The fact that it's free and capable of compiling a number of languages. It runs under many operating systems and generates code. For many different CPUs, including all of the widely used ones. GCC is the primary compiler for many Unix based operating systems, including Linux, BSD and Mac OS. And it's used extensively for commercial software development. For information about GCC, visit GCC dot GNU dot org. How good is GCC if adding errors in programs? GCC has various command line options that control how thorough it checks programs. When these options are used, GCC is quite good at finding potential trouble spots in a program. Here are some of the more popular options. Dash wall causes the compiler to produce warning messages when it detects possible errors. Dash W can follow by codes for specific warnings. Dash wall means all dash W options should be used in conjunction with dash O for maximum effect. Dash W issues additional warning messages beyond those produced by dash wall. Dash pedantic issues all warnings required by C standard, causing programs to use non-standard features to be rejected. Dot dash A N S I turns off features of G C C that aren't standard C. And enables a few standard features that are normally disabled. Dash STD equals C eight nine and dash STD equals C nine nine specifies which version of the C compiler to use to check the program. These options are often used in combination. GCC dash O, big O dash wall, dash W dash pedantic dash fancy. Dash STD equals C nine nine dash O pun pun dash C. Why is C so terse? It seems as though programs would be more readable if C used begin and end instead of these brackets, integer instead of int and so forth. Legend has it that the brevity of C programs is due to the environment that existed in Bell Labs at the time the language was developed. The first C compiler ran on the D E C P D P dash eleven, an early mini computer. Programmers used a teletype, essentially a typewriter connected to a computer to enter programs and print listings. Because teletypes were very slow, they could print only ten characters per second, minimizing the number of characters in a program was clearly advantageous. In some C books, the main function ends with exit zero instead of return zero. Are these the same? When they appear inside main, these statements are indeed equivalent, both terminate the program returning the value of zero to the operating system. Which one to use is mostly a matter of taste. What happens if a program reaches the end of the main function without executing a return statement? The return statement isn't mandatory. If it is missing, the program will still terminate. In C eighty nine, the value returned to the operating system is undefined. In C ninety nine, if main is declared to return an int, as in our examples, the program returns zero to the operating system. Otherwise, the program returns an unspecified value. Question, does the compiler remove a comment entirely or replace it with blank space? Answer, some old C compilers delete all the characters in each comment, making it possible to write. And to have the compiler interpreted as this. According to the C standard, however, the compiler must replace each comment by a single character, so this trick doesn't work. Instead, we'd end up with the following illegal statement. How can I tell if my program has an un-terminated comment? If you're lucky, the program won't compile because the comment has rendered the program illegal. If the program does compile, there are several techniques that you can use. Stepping through the program line by line with a debugger will feel if any lines are being skipped. Some IDEs display comments in a distinctive color to distinguish them from the surrounding code. If you're using it in such an environment, you can easily spot un-terminated comments since program text will have a different color. If it's accidentally included in a comment, a program such as the lint can also help. It is il- is it legal to nest one comment inside another? Old style comments can be nested. For example, the following code is illegal. Oh, the closing symbol on the second line matches the opening symbol on the first line, so the compiler would flag the closing symbol on the third line as an error. C's prohibition against nested comments can sometimes be a problem. Suppose we've written a long program containing many short comments. Disable a portion of the program temporarily. During nesting, say, our first impulse is to comment out the offending lines with this. Unfortunately. This method wouldn't work if the lines contain old style comments. C ninety nine comments, those begin with slash slash can be nested inside the old comments. However. Another advantage is to use this kind of comment. In any event, there's a better way to disable portions of the program as we'll see later. Question, where does the float type get its name? Float is short for floating point, a technique for storing numbers in which the decimal point floats. A float value is usually stored in two parts, the fraction and the exponent. The number twelve point zero might be stored as one point five times two to the power of three, for example, where one point five is the fraction. And three is the exponent. Some programming languages call this type real instead of float. Why do floating point concepts need to end with the letter F? For the full explanation, see chapter seven. Here's the short answer. A constant that contains a decimal point but doesn't end with F has type double, short for double precision. Double values are stored more accurately than float values. Moreover, double values can be larger than float values, which is why we need to add a letter F when assigning to a float variable. Without the F, a warning will be generated, or may be generated. About the possibility of a number being stored into a float variable that exceeds the capacity of the variable. Question, is it really true that there's no limit on the length of the identifier? Yes and no. C eighty nine standard says that identifiers may be arbitrary along, however. Compilers are only required to remember the first thirty one characters, sixty three characters in C ninety nine. Thus, if two names begin with the same thirty one characters, compiler might be unable to distinguish them. To make matters even more complicated, there are special rules for identifiers with external linkage. Most function names fall into this category, since these names must be made available to the linker. And since some older linkers can handle only short names. Only the first six characters are significant in C eighty nine. Moreover, the case of letters may not matter. As a result, capital A, B, C, D, E, F, G and lowercase A, B, C, D, E, F, H. Might be treated as the same name. In C ninety nine, the first thirty one characters are significant. And the case of the letters is taken into account. Most compilers and linkers are more generous than the standards, so these rules aren't a problem in practice. Don't worry about making identifiers too long, worry about making them too short. How many spaces should I use for indentation? That's a tough question. Leave it too little space and the eye has trouble detecting indentation. Leave too much and the lines run off the screener page. Many C programmers. Indent nested statements, eight spaces, one tab stop, which is probably too much. Studies have shown that the optimal amount of indentation is three spaces, but many programmers feel. Uncomfortable with the number that aren't. Studies have shown that the optimal amount of indentation is three spaces, but many programmers feel uncomfortable with the number that aren't a power of two. Although I normally prefer to indent three or four spaces, I'll use two spaces in this book so that the programs will fit in the margins. Alright, you guys, this was the entire reading of chapter two, C fundamentals from. C Programming: A Modern Approach, second edition by K. N. King. Again, we're gonna go back through the notes at a later date and polish them up. You can find them in my GitHub link down below, but I appreciate you guys being here. If you enjoyed the kind of audio book reading of this out loud. Uh please leave a thumbs up and thank you guys so much for being here. I'll see you next time in chapter three.